Well, I can hear.
Oh, business.
Are your microphones on? We can't, we can't hear you.
Yes.
Oh, business. Do you know certification of election results?
To the letter dated April 4, 2013, from Pike County Court Melissa Tensky, a connotation on the Candace's encapsulation of the results of the general municipal election held in Pike County, Missouri on Tuesday, April 2, 2013, I hereby certify that the results of the political subdivision are as stated on the attached sheet. Ward one, total votes, 169 votes, Ann Hanford, 73, Salvador Police, 96. Ward two, total votes, 122, Kathleen Smith, 75, Don Oakley, 47. City Louisiana Award three, total votes, 159, James Minor, 64, Bart Meadner, 95. City Louisiana Award four, total votes, 108, Russell Stevens, 103, with five riot hits.
Oh, do you think a motion will be approved and certification? Motion made, second.
What's the motion?
Motion to.
Do you understand what it is?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I made the motion that we accept the election results.
Have a second. Second, Mr. Woods.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanford?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
So be it. So at this time, I need a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. I got a second. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanford?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
So be it. You stand adjourned and you'll square in the new candidate or the new elected. So all of it needs to come board. And Sharon will give the over call.
Our folks who sit right here.
Don't read.
Okay. Excuse me.
There we go.
You need to take a step back.
Raise your right hand. When I say my name, you fill in your name and your office. I, Sherri Decores.
I, Rose Muff, the municipal.
Do solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications for the office of city clerk.
Do solemnly swear that I possess all qualifications for the office of council person.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class.
The provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinances of the City of Louisiana.
And the ordinances of the City of Louisiana.
And faithfully demean myself in office.
And faithfully demean myself in office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sorry.
Call the council order, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Meadner?
Here.
Mr. Police?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Present.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Okay, first business we had, we'll elect a mayor pro tempore. I'll entertain some motions.
I make a motion to appoint Kathy Smith.
Make motion.
We need seconds on those?
You can get your cane if you want to.
Yeah. Second, on Sal.
On Sal's motion, you got a second on, second by Larry White. On Sonny. Okay. All right. Those in favor of the first motion we have is Kathy Smith. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
No.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Meadner?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
No.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. Wood?
No.
Okay. So we need, that motion failed. So we need to have, we'll call the roll. We call the roll. Now we have a motion on Sonny Stevens. We have a second. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
No.
Mr. Meadner?
No.
Mr. Police?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Okay, we have a tie. So in a tie vote, I vote for Mr. Stevens. He's the new mayor pro tempore. Okay, we have committees in front of you. I'll entertain a motion approved with committees.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve the new slate of committees.
I second.
Motion made in second, call the roll.
Is there a point of information? Is there an area for discussion after the second on that motion?
You can discuss it if you want.
Okay. It, I'm curious to ask too, because it's, because it's clear from 110-110 that you're to do this with the concurrence of the city council. I was wondering if you solicited or are interested in our interests or our input in the composition of these committees?
No, I did not. It's my job to pick them, and that's how I picked them. And you can, your selection could either be vote against it or vote for it.
So you do not want any input from us on that, these assignments?
No, the mayor's position to appoint.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Meadner?
No.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, reading and hearing, a petition to other committees. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I missed it. At this time, we'll open a new council to the audience. Anybody wanting to address the council may do so at this time. Mr. Cohen.
Representing Louisiana Ministerial Alliance, Randall Cohen. Terry Cook is here with me. On Thursday, May the 2nd. That's the National Day of Prayer. In years past, we have had an observance for this event at the riverfront. And we would like to ask permission to do that at 7:30 in the morning on May the 2nd. If the weather is not good, we would like to use this room. So I think that would, we would use your permission to have the event at the riverfront as well as to here, so that, you know, plans can be made to do that. And in addition to that, we would also ask that representatives from the city, all the city council members, the police chief, anyone from the city would be invited. And if there would be a proclamation that the mayor would make on this subject, we can come up with some wording on that, if that's your wish. So I've made the request, so are there any questions about the request?
What time, sir?
7:30 a.m.
I'd make a motion that the ministerial allowance be allowed to use the riverfront gazebo if the weather is not good, that they could use council chambers for their May 2nd World Day of Prayer observance.
National Day of Prayer.
National Day of Prayer. Excuse me.
I second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Meadner?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Okay, you have.
Thank you. If you would be willing to make a proclamation, I think Terry Cook and I could come up with appropriate wording, if that's what you'd like to do.
We can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council? If not.
I have a request of the Twisted Cat Outdoor Fishing Tournament. I'm requesting the use of the riverfront and the boat docks on August 10. It is a night tournament.
I've got four scheduled already. I have to see if that conflicts with any of them.
Okay, I have a proclamation for Young Child Week. Whereas the Friends of the Louisiana Library and other local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the week of the young child, April 14 through the 20th of 2013. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities which are crucial to the growth and development of young children and to building better futures for everyone in Pike County. And whereas all young children and their families across the country and in Louisiana, Missouri, deserve access to high-quality early education and care. And whereas in recognizing and supporting the people, programs, and policies that are committed to high-quality early childhood education as the right choice for kids. And now therefore I, Thomas W. Wallace, Mayor of the City of Louisiana, do hereby proclaim April 14 through the 20th as the week of the young child in Louisiana, Missouri, and encourage all citizens to work and make good investments in early childhood in Louisiana, Missouri.
Do you need a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept that proclamation.
Call the roll.
Do second.
I'll second.
The other proclamation, after this, after we take this vote, we'll go back. Just take care of Mr. Cohen's and Terry.
To make that proclamation? Are they going to provide, well, are they going to provide wording?
They'll give it to Sharon. I just need to, so we can accept that proclamation.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Meadner?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Well, I support this, but my wife is involved, so I'll abstain.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
I'll entertain that motion now. Alliance, Ministerial Alliance on the proclamation. Somebody make the motion.
I'll make the motion that we allow you to sign a proclamation for the National Day of Prayer.
Make it. You have a second.
Second.
Second by Sal.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Meadner?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Okay. Any other communications I have? If not.
And I know this is a topic that's foremost on every citizen's mind. That being getting a grocery store. As I mentioned last week, another grocery chain had contacted me. They were able to look at Alps. They were not able to look at Kroger at the time. He looked at Alps. That is by no means or any way in any shape to be occupied. There's water in the center of the store and there's mold throughout. This same particular grocer was able to look at Kroger today. He is very much interested, and he will be in the process of negotiating with them. Also, at the same time, I sent an email to Neiman Foods. And this is the latest update from them. It says, "We're taking baby steps, but it does appear to be getting closer on an agreement with the landlord to the shopping center. We hope to have a conference call this week to get these last couple of points resolved." So you all know as much as I know.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's say that those two coincide with each other. What would happen in that situation? With the new supermarket that's coming in, and if Neiman's decided that they want to come in as well? Is there some type of?
That'll be negotiations between Rawl Walters.
Okay.
And the two prospective grocers.
Will we hear about that in time?
I will keep you updated.
Thank you.
As I learn information, I'll be more than happy to pass it on. The only request I have had from the second grocer is that it remain anonymous at this time until there is something positive to move forward with.
No, she's still there.
She's there.
Oh, I didn't see it. This time, I'd like to make two presentations to the councilmen that are going out and the council persons. I'll call Ann and Donna. Go with the ladies. Certificate of appreciation is presented to Ann Hanford. Where she has served faithfully as a member of the council for one year and played a vital role in the important work of the council. Therefore, I, Thomas Wallace, to virtue of authority vested in me as mayor, speaking on behalf of the entire city council and all of our citizens. Do hereby tender Ann Hanford what this certificate of public recognition. Don Sein goes to you. I'm not going to call you caller, so I'm going to use the phone. Whereas Don Oakley has served the community well as a member of the Louisiana City Council. He has served faithfully as a member of the council for two years and played a vital role in the important work of the council. Now, therefore, I, Thomas Wallace, to virtue of authority vested in me as mayor, speaking on behalf of the entire city council and all of our citizens, do hereby tender Don Oakley this certificate of public recognition. Okay, no other communications. We'll go with committee reports. Finance, Mr. Sal.
Excuse my stumbling around. Obviously, it's my first week, so bear with me. Ms. Hanford called me at 5:30 p.m. with Ms. Hanford, Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Wood present, also present were Mr. Jenery, Mr. Jenny, Mayor Wallace, Mr. Rapp, and Ms. Johnson. Ms. Hanford made a motion to approve minutes of the March 2013 meeting, seconded by Mr. Stevens, all voting yay. Ms. Hanford made a motion to bring before the council paying warrant 22 through 31, 2013, in the amount of $310,782.92, seconded by Mr. Hoffman, all voting yay. I make a motion to pay those warrants, 22 through 31, 2013.
Second.
Motion made in second, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Meadner?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes. Mr. Jenny stated that he has a bill from Klinger and Associates for $1,500 for the water plant for the cryptosporidium. The contract was for $33,000, and $28,000 has been billed. We make a motion, I make a motion to approve that payment as well.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Meadner?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Since Ms. Sharon is butchering my name, I'm Ms. Cacor.
It's Polis, not Police.
Is it Decores? Can I just say Sharon?
Yeah.
Ms. Sharon stated that she has a bill for Missouri DNR for the wastewater plant project for Klinger and Associates in the amount of $14,188.57, and Lehman Construction, the amount of $296,582.40, for a total of $310,770.97. I make a motion to approve that payment as well.
I'll second that.
Second, but yeah. Motion made in second, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yeah.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Meadner?
Yes.
Mr. Polis?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Sharon stated that the health insurance is up for renewal on the insurance committee meet and would like to change the insurance to Anthem Blue Cross, section option 7RX, option AJ, and Blue Preferred Plus, option 3RX, option AJ. Ms. Hanford made a motion to take to full council paying $1,500 for the water plant, cryptosporidium, paying Missouri DNR for the water plant project to Klinger and Associates in the amount of $14,188.57, and Lehman Construction in the amount of $296,582.40, for a total to $310,770.97, and to accept the insurance committee's recommendation for the health insurance, seconded by Stevens, all voting yay. Mr. Jenny stated that he is working on the 2013-2014 budget and would like to raise the amount paid by the city for the insurance to $6,000 in lieu of a raise to the employees. Ms. Hanford made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Wood, all voting yay. Meeting was adjourned at 5:30 5:00 p.m.
We have to make a motion to accept these insurance and the payments.
Do we have to have that right away?
Yes.
On the insurance payments? We did.
And to Lehman and all, those have to be approved by full council.
Okay. So I make a motion to bring that to full council to vote? Can I ask a question?
We already did the one.
You just make a motion.
To approve it? Okay.
Can I ask a question before we do this? Can we find out, I know somebody can, what percent of money have we paid Lehman? For what percent of work have we got done?
That's a good question.
That could be accomplished.
I think they're way ahead of us. They are. That's all I have.
I make a motion to approve the changes in the health insurance.
I do have a second.
Second.
Motion made in second, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Meadner?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
It's Polis.
Polis?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm new to. Mrs. Smith?
Yay.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
That's the energy here for Polis. Okay, fire committee.
A report on the fire committee appears they met on April 1st. And they approved their minutes from the previous meeting. And there was no additional action or activity by the committee. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Police committee.
Okay. We met and approved our minutes from the last meeting. We stated that the prescription drug takeback program was set for April the 27th, tentatively in the parking lot by the old Kroger building. And that's all we had.
Okay. Thank you. Streets and alleys.
I made a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting. And I really have nothing other than, Bob, have you found out anything more about the ditch out at Dollar General?
Yes, I did finally get in touch with the inspector for the area. He called me back today, and he said he would not have a problem with us filling that and extending that cover. He said after we completed their project, in all likelihood, they would come back and probably replace that pole and reposition it.
If you look from Kelly Lane West on Georgia Street, those two tubes they put in are not lined up.
Right.
One of them's going to wash out underneath the street. The south is going to wash out. The way it's pointed is going to wash out underneath the street eventually.
Well, if we.
It's about half the pipe is headed toward the street.
The way it is, but if we put our extension on it and banned it, it won't do that.
You can put a band in it?
Yeah.
Okay. And another thing, did you find out anything else about the guardrails?
He did not call me back, but a perfect gentleman is here. Mr. Lynn, if I can put you on the spot, do you have any guardrail?
Want me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I got some.
Okay, if I can get with you tomorrow and get a price on that? Thank you, sir.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Billings and grounds. Motion was made to approve the minutes from the last meeting. It was approved. Mr. Hoffman stated that the library hosted a Marshall Venture for a company that was purchasing gold coins and a cedric. He stated he had a problem with them hosting the event and the library not being paid. The library board did not approve it. There was discussion on the matter, and it would be looked into. Mr. Elliott had questions about the contract for the pool. Mr. Jenny stated that the only section that was changed was section 16. Mr. Elliott asked that the city manager be changed to agree. Mr. Elliott asked that the city manager be changed to be city administrator, and that paragraph five, section A, be clarified. Mr. White inquired about the new general dollar store. Mr. Jenny stated he had bids to extend the cover from the front of the building and to put up a guardrail. Mr. Jenny stated he applied for an extension with FEMA for a removal of the concrete at Fifth and Tennessee Street in the city branch. Mr. Jenny was contacted by Tim Carter concerning the empty lot downtown the old Rexall Building. He informed Mr. Jenny that if the city would seal the outside of his building, he would consider purchasing the lot for a reasonable price and assume all maintenance responsibilities of the property. That's all I have.
Can we back up a little to the library? Controversy.
Danette came in today and said the library board would be meeting tonight, and they were going to outline a policy on how to make approval for these different events that they may host. So that should rectify the situation.
They all, that was what I was going to report along with. I mentioned to the library board that the city wanted the library board to make these decisions, not City Hall. Day-to-day operations of the library are under the control of the library board, period.
Laura, do you have a question?
I've, I'll drop the question. Sonny covered it.
I have, going to Tim Carter and the Rexall.
I was going to go through the whole list.
Okay. Well, I was just going to say.
And that's a decision that needs to be looked at later on when you all, now that you're on board, you contain time to reflect on it.
Yeah.
It does not have to be accomplished tonight.
Right, I was just going to say that since it's city property, it would have to go up for bid.
It would be discussion, however you want to do.
Okay.
With regard to the pool contract, I've been in touch with Marsha Garrison. Marsha will make those changes, make the change from city manager to city administrator, and she will clarify the activities that they are responsible for. Again, on the new Dollar General, I got in touch with the inspector finally today, and he's looked at it. He has no problems with what we're intending to do. The extension with FEMA, that's been approved. I received approval to go ahead and complete that project. So now it's just a matter of arranging for either renting or having someone, hire someone to bring in a track hoe and remove the rock from the base of the town branch there. And I've already addressed the thing with Mr. Carter.
Bob, can I ask you one other question?
Sure.
On the Dollar General, we're putting up the, putting in that cover and the guardrail. I don't have a problem with that. I was just, you know, you talked last week about trying to straighten out. Is that something that DNR should be made aware of since you're talking about?
Already contacted.
Okay, wonderful.
I've had a question on the softball field. Is that appropriate now where we're at on, on the softball field?
I already made my reapplication to Major League Baseball. I sent my letter of inquiry back to them last week, so I'm just waiting for a response. And they were, it was done pretty quickly. I'd say within a month. So as soon as I hear something, I'll let you all know.
Well, there was a concern about the Corey League and how that would affect the Corey League players, and I don't know if that was ever mentioned or talked about.
Well, I brought up the Corey League. I've been in touch with the president. I've asked them to provide me, the way our ordinance reads, it stipulates that they have to provide the city with $4,000 worth of in-kind services, whether it be referees, whatever, this, that. I made that request. I gave them a deadline a week ago, last Friday. That deadline has not been met. I've had one call. He asked if he could have a slight extension. I said it would be through sometime last week. I still have nothing from them.
So basically, you were just requesting that down on paper for you to look at?
Because they did not do it for last year and the year before. And that's information that our auditor likes to look at.
Okay.
So therein lies the problem. And then the high school and everybody else gets thrown into the bailiwick.
So you, but you, so you gave them an opportunity to get that to you?
And I'll be happy to provide you a copy of my communicate.
Actually, yeah, please.
Anything else?
Yeah, we have. I've addressed everything on it.
Okay. Water? We met April the 1st. We approved the minutes of the March meeting, and Mr. Jenny was asking about where the wastewater plant was, and he said you were catching up, and it's not all like that. Ask somebody else.
With regards to the wastewater plant, they poured the other exterior foundation wall.
They're short.
And the only part that's left is.
Too short.
The north side exterior wall, which they should complete and form this week. Then, once that's accomplished, our timetable should be fine. We're out of the flood risk then. Because those exterior walls will be, will be completed.
Since we're on water, and this is a little bit to do with water, sometime back, we talked about getting floodgates from down there.
I still have a proposal that I have on file from an outfit that was willing to do it, so, and I can bring that to your attention.
I think that needs to be addressed again. Okay, thank you.
That's it. Grant committee.
Mr. Stevens made a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Mr. Oakley seconded and all voted yea. Demolition grant is pending, and actual start date has not been provided yet. It needs to be put into a motion as quickly as possible, as this has been pending for some time now. Nothing yet?
No, done. The, if you'd like, please, the committee, council, I, the start date is April the 8th. Today was the start date. They have to have the job completed by June 17th. So they should be starting sometime this week, move the equipment in.
And they will probably, the first demolitions will be up on Van Deeger Hill.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jenny received a letter stating the city was awarded $6,000 for the recycle benches grant. He stated we would receive six eight-foot benches, two eight-foot WCA picnic tables, and four eight-foot picnic tables. The total cost is $57.48, which will be covered by the grant. There is no matching funds that have to be provided. The HVAC grant that was applied for was denied due to the fact that the project was already started. Mr. Jenny received a letter from MLB stating that they needed more information on the grant application, and he will provide that information and resubmit the application. The grant for the engineering study for the water tower at the industrial park is still pending. Still pending?
The what?
The grant for the water tower at the industrial.
Yes.
That's all, Mr. Mayor?
Oakley, thank you. Ordinance committee.
The ordinance committee was called to order, and the minutes of the previous meetings were approved. Mr. White seconded the motions and all voted yes. Mr. Adams also submitted some information to the council concerning commercial grease traps. As there is no fee schedule for commercial inspections, this cannot be voted on at this time. And I think we have a couple of ordinances pending, and I would guess that Mrs. Kokoros would like to have them done as soon as possible.
I understand that we'd like to complete them as soon as possible, but I believe that it's in conflict for the referring committee not to be the same as the city council. Section 110, 240 states specifically, even underlined, any referring committee must consist of the current city council members, and I believe this has come up in the past at this time during council changes due to the sequence in which we do things. So I actually think it's against the ordinance for us to actually proceed tonight with that vote, which I bring up primarily because it probably needs to be addressed long-term in the way that we do this or in the ordinance itself, not because I have any objection to these, but I believe this is a problem.
We could solve this by having a work study and then a official council meeting afterwards. It's posted. I understand.
It would have to be publicly posted, because I don't believe it meets criteria for a special session.
So we, can we set up a work study?
I don't know necessarily need to work, need a work study as just a committee meeting?
Yeah.
And then go into a council.
Right, okay, we'll go. Okay. The committee that meets would be myself, Mr. Elliott, Mrs. Smith, and Mr. White. And then following that, we have an official council meeting to get it ready twice.
Right.
Do we have a date that works with you people? I'm available anytime.
How fast we want to do this, I can do it tomorrow night.
I can do it. Well, no, you can't, because it can't be posted.
Ah, it has to be posted. Yeah, it'd have to be after 6:30.
Friday? Sal suggested Friday, which is what day?
I can't be here Friday, but.
Let's back it up, Thursday?
Thursday?
No, Thursday, I definitely can't be here. I'll be out of town Thursday.
I will be as well.
Halloween, Monday?
Perfect.
I can do it Monday.
Monday, the 15th?
15th?
At, Sal will be back in town till like 6:00.
Well, I can be here by 5:30.
Okay, 5:30.
Yeah, I'll be here until the council. What did you say?
April 15th at 5:30. Yeah, that's you.
Yeah.
And council meeting immediately following?
Yes.
Then that, I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any resident, I say you would go to special reports. The city administrator's already gave more for this. Human relations, I don't see anybody from that commission. Board of adjustment? The board has nothing, sir. Introduction to resolutions, which we're going to have. New business?
I went ahead and wrote this one out because it concerns me, and I checked it out with the MML, so I would be very open to discussion, if you please, on any of these points. But I would like to make a motion, as it is the intention of the standing committees to be such that they address current meaningful municipal concerns, and as the structure of our committees has not been revisited for some time, and as there are a number of possible restructuring options available, which might better suit the current needs of Louisiana, and as Section 110, 110 intends cooperative action on committees regarding these subdivisions of the council and their appointments, I move that we establish a work study with the full council and mayor to the purpose of revising our named committees, their function, and the appointments made thereto for the direct purpose of better serving the people of Louisiana. And given that we've already found time that works for everyone, I would propose that we do that in conjunction to these very brief meetings that we already set up on Monday, April 15th. So that's a motion.
Okay.
My second.
Motion made in second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I do, what, any, like, changes around?
Potentially, my understanding from my conversation with MML is that the committees are there to address whatever the concerns are. Some of them you expect to be pretty standard and static, such as the water committee, and others can be manipulated to address things that are important, such as economic development, communications, issues that are maybe more important. What I notice is, and what prompted this is, as you can see from tonight, fire has nothing, police has nothing, but I can imagine that something like a public safety committee, which had a broader breadth, would both address a larger concern, more relevant to everything from buildings to, you know, all of it, and perhaps be more effective for our city and our citizens.
If you would check back, yes, this time the police committee had very little to report. In the past, they've had as much, if not more, than most of the other ones. This is an isolated case, not an every time occurrence.
I didn't, I didn't mean to pick on police for that. What I mean is that I think most of what I hear in most committee reports tends to be a regurgitation of the minutes, almost verbatim, that they are not summaries of the critical issues that really should be addressed by the council and the mayor at this kind of a meeting, and that perhaps there's room to make for some more important, larger topics about economic development or overall, you know, larger issues than the price of turkey and, you know, et cetera. I think we can, we could do better by examining the way these committees are structured and operate.
So before I vote, just a brief, I'm going to vote to change committees or just vote to talk about?
No, just to talk about it, purely just a work study.
I understand. I'm ready.
This is very much, I, I want to note, I am very much extending this as an invitation to cooperatively, really brainstorm this thing.
Well, the committees established titles and everything years ago, and they haven't been revisited for years.
Exactly so.
And there could be economic developments and different things. And like I asked, the council would consider, you was here, hire an economic developer, person for the city, and also join the PCDA.
Yep.
So that's one committee we could change from. You still have to have, committees were formed to actually help, like, the fire department needed a spokesman, so we made a fire committee. Ordnance committee was really the research and come back. That's why these committees were formed. It used to be we had no committees. Okay, that's good. You're going to have it the same night as you were going to have the work.
That's my motion. I think we're waiting on a second.
Following these other two.
Sal seconded.
Motion made in second. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
I vote yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Neener?
Yes.
Mr. Stapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith? Mr. Stevens?
Yea.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
This is probably old business, but I was just told they can't hear me. I'm too old and too stove up. I can't bend over and get to this thing. We need longer cords. We'll get some longer cords for that, because it is, they are short.
Some are short and some are long.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get you fixed up.
I have one more. Sorry. This is a very simple one. I was trying to do some research as I was looking at committees on appointments in general, and maybe Sharon can, can help you with this or, or the attorney. What is the process for appointment for appointed officers, such as the attorney? We, I can't find that in our actual municipal code. Is that in a resolution, or is that in a non-codified document someplace? But what is the, where is it described, the process by which this city goes through to appoint its appointed officers, as listed?
It's in the 77 MOS.
Thank you.
Okay, media clarification.
Are you ready, Dave?
Please go ahead.
Playing with a new toy here. Okay, the demo grant, that's supposed to start April 8th and conclude on June 17th. Is that right? Okay.
Okay. And then in the recycling grant, you had six eight-feet, what? What all did you get in the recycling bench grant?
Oh, that was, that was a scrap tire, and basically what they do is they make, make these benches out of composite scrap tires.
Uh-huh.
Six eight-foot benches, two eight-foot WC, a picnic table.
Wheelchair accessible.
There you go. Thank you. And then a copy of the committees, of committee assignments.
I'll have to get that to you.
But can I have it tonight?
Yes.
I can give her mine.
Ah, thank you. Go ahead.
First of all, when you talked about increasing the amount the city pays for health insurance, it really goes from, we talked about increasing it from forty-eight to six thousand. Is that for the plan that's currently underway, or for the plan that's coming up for the new budget?
Plan's coming up.
And I wasn't completely clear on what, what ordinances would be discussed at the work study?
The codification of the ordinances that were passed last year for the code book.
Okay.
And the ordinance to take out of the agenda the closed session.
The closed session thing is about?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Who makes up the insurance committee?
Uh, let's, it's employees.
Five employees.
Five employees.
And, but is there any news of the council on that?
No.
Or from the city administration?
No.
Okay.
Just Sharon. Only the city clerk.
I don't think so.
That's fine.
No.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Motion made, second, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Yea.
Mr. Smith? Yea. Mr. Stevens?
Yea. Yay.
Really, that's the least of my concerns.